This conference will now be recorded.
Again, it's hard to, as we've staggered the hires throughout the year.
Is that intentional?
What's that?
You stagger them intentionally?
Yeah, because to, for budgetary purposes.
Okay.
Well, not too, yeah. Yeah, so I'm probably down.
I'm sure you're a busy boy. I got a bunch of emails.
Probably seven.
We approved.
Organized that.
Yeah. Really just trying to fill the gaps.
I said it wasn't too bad. They kind of cut the.
Well, hey, can we do so much?
No, we don't have, that's why I called you.
Oh, no, no, no.
Well, that's usually, I usually get asked for fully staff.
I wouldn't do that. Me, I'll come to you privately.
Well, yeah.
That's all we need. I try to keep it low profile.
So I'm kind of.
Some, yeah, a good portion of them, yeah.
Down on nine.
Yep, that too.
Yep. I think Norman's here with. Yeah, I think so. I saw Norman here. Yeah, he's there. Hey, Matthew. I'm just glad that you're feeling that things are getting normal. It's nice to see the crowd being. Well, that's what happens when you live in La De La. That's always funny. I'm sorry. That would be funny.
La De La.
Yeah, La De La.
Water though.
Water.
Water.
I don't know if that being on a curve might help it some, but that one long run across and that's, that's just a long straight run.
Yeah.
Oh, well.
If you, if you do like this and you have landscape in between, it's flat.
The long runs are the ones that got.
Hey, Kenny? Too glad you're here.
Oh, yeah.
Did my friend that is next. His house get water? I, I mean, they must know. Wouldn't they, wouldn't they call? Yeah, they still are.
Yeah.
No, I'm, I'm okay. I mean, my roof, my roof is what got, I lost a bunch of shingles.
Avenue.
Oh, you didn't, you, okay.
No, I don't.
Oh.
I don't.
But I sure was. There when that was, when it started. We didn't have any trees on any of our properties because Bob was so diligent. He said, I could feel it. I could feel it in my bones. It was going to be bad.
I know it's a. No chance of that.
Is that what it is?
Maybe. It's where you gotta try and, try and make it. I close that.
Actually, I'd like to talk to you about that in private.
Well, my neighbors are like going, or I waved to one the other day.
And good people. Same spelling.
Okay, I'd like to call the order. The Zephyr Hills City Council meeting of Monday, October 28th, 2024. It is 6:00 PM. And Ricardo, can I have the roll call, please?
Yes. Kenneth Burgess.
Here.
Charles Proctor.
Here.
Lance Smith. Jody Wilkinson. Steven Spina.
Here.
Mayor Munson. William Poe. Matthew Maggard.
Here.
All right, thank you. And first, we're going to have the invocation, and this is going to be by Pam Proctor of Crystal Springs Worship Center, and we'll follow that with a pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this opportunity to gather as a community with the people that we love and the friends we've met due to this storm. God, we thank you for your protection that you have given. It could have been so much worse. And you've brought out the good in neighbors. As we helped one another to overcome, and though there's much yes to do, tonight we gather in support of this community that we all love. I ask that you would be in charge of these proceedings, and your will be done. And we praise and honor you for who you are, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pam, for that invocation. I'd like to welcome everyone to our council meeting tonight. I know there's some, a couple of exciting things happening. First off, when the mayor gets to do her thing. I'd like to remind everyone to silence their electronics, what I'm trying to do right now. And we have a citizens' comments at the beginning of the meeting, and we'll allow you to come up, make comments. You have three minutes to make those comments. Tonight, if, I anticipate there may be some comments that are going to be somewhat similar. So what we'll do is we'll just have everybody make your comments before we address them. We'll just have to take notes on that. So at this time, I'm going to ask Ricardo if there's anybody signed up to speak.
Yes. First off, I have Dawn Hare.
And as you come forward to speak, you need to state your name and address for the record. And like I said, you'll have three minutes to make your comments.
Hello, my name is Dawn Hare. I live at 6012 Ridgeway Drive. My, my complaint tonight is I live right off of Geiger Road, and it says on both sides of the, both ends, no through trucks. There's trucks that go down there all the time. They, I have called the police department. They won't do anything. They say that they're too busy. I have called Public Works. They said nothing will be done for at least two years or more for that road, except for patching it. My complaint is if there was a motorcyclist that came down that road at night, did not know that there was a pothole, they're gone. There's no way that anybody could keep up with Geiger Road. The sides of the road are crumbling. We don't need a middle line because we have the crack for the middle line. And it's just really bad. I, I'm the second house. I'm like, the closest road is like Fairlon. So I'm the second house. I could sit in my house and I could feel the trucks. I have told many officers, I'm an honest person. I was coming down Eland Avenue, or Eland Road. There was a semi, not carrying anything but his tractor trailer. I know the speed limit is sixty, I'm, I'm sorry, thirty. They were going over fifty miles an hour while I was on the phone with the police officers. Something needs to be done. You know, it's a residential area, and it's a safety. I can understand right now with all the flooding that's over at Silver Oaks, with those water trucks that are coming in and out, but these are not those water trucks. It's not just five or six o'clock at night. It runs all night long. And you could feel it. Something just needs to be done. I don't know who else to call. That's why I came to the meeting to see what else can be done, because it is a hazard to motorcyclists, especially at night. And that's my concern.
Okay, thank you, Dawn. Is anybody else signed up to speak to this particular item? Because if not, then I think we'll, we'll go ahead and address this. And, and I've said this before, unfortunately, I think a big part of the problem is GPS systems. That's, that's a shortcut to get to, over to Island there. And I think, I think they need to address that with one way, but I'll let the city manager address the, the time schedule, because it is a county road, and there's, there's some things that have been done already leading up to that. So I'll let him. Or somebody.
If I can address quickly. So to start, Geiger Road is, is a county road. But we, we as a staff have worked with Pasco County over the past twelve months at least. So Pasco County is committed to repaving that road in the next twelve months. So, and then, and the fiscal year that we're in now, so sometime between October and next September. With the storm that has come through, a lot of projects have been pushed. So it is on the books to be repaved. Part of that repavement is to provide safety shoulders, and it's not, when it's, it's not two, three feet of extra asphalt. It's just a gentle slope, six to twelve inch slope, so it doesn't have that hard drop off on the, on the edge of the road. To address the traffic or the truck traffic that's there, one thing that we can do is we can run extra patrols. You know, the issue is, is if there's not a cop there and they run through, they don't get a ticket, right? So we're gonna, we can look at that. We'll also look at, or we've talked about reaching out to these mapping companies to designate Geiger Road as a, as a non-truck route.
It already is. It says it on both ends, on 301 and on Eland Avenue.
Right, but understood. But if, when you type it into GPS or your Google Maps or, you know, whatever software program you use to give directions, when you plug it in, it turns the traffic on Geiger Road instead of taking them for King to Island and then around. So we'll work on that. What was the third part? Was there a third question? Third part of your question? Or did I answer everything?
You know, the, the potholes with the motorcycles.
Paving schedule, I guess.
Sorry, I was thinking there was one more. So we're working.
As long as I'm getting hurt. I mean, that's all I want, because I have called the police department and they have pushed me over the sheriff's department. Sheriff's Department pushed me back over, so I feel like a ping pong.
Yep. So I, so I will, I can tell you, I can promise you that I've spoken to the chief, that's who's sitting behind me here, and I turned around to make sure what I was saying to you was, was accurate. So, but him and I have talked outside of just now. So we will work, increasing the patrols, work on the mapping to get that changed, so it's not directing truck, truck traffic onto Geiger. And we are working with Pasco County. We're not working with them. It's, it's slated for this fiscal year to have that road repaved. We're working to try to get sidewalks on one side or the other, to get pedestrian traffic off of the road. So there's some right-of-way constraints, but we're working on that to try to get that done as well as part of the project.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I just add what Billy said? The city manager said that it's really being rebuilt, Geiger Road, not just repaved, right?
It's reclamation, total reclamation. Yes.
Rec, it's going to be rebuilt.
Yes.
But I also wonder if, you know, we have those electronic signs, if every now and then we could put one on both ends or an end and switch it around that say no truck.
That's what I was thinking.
It's a little bigger, brighter.
I, I talked to an officer today, and I said, even if you put like Christmas lights around it, you know, flashing, and she says, well, we can't do that.
You know, they're going to blow by a sign if they want to blow by a sign, but maybe if we do the electronic one for a little while on each end, and maybe that'll help.
That'll help.
We did that before, and it did posit. The safety committee, we met with the safety committee. They're already working on changing the GPS coordinates on Googles and all of that. Unfortunately, you know, people are still going to, people are still, but I'm glad, yeah, no, it's a problem.
I understand with the storms and everything. Everything is going to be put back. I understand that.
Yep.
But as long as something is going to be done.
Yes, ma'am.
And like he said, you know, put sidewalks in, because there are a lot. And right there at Fairlawn's and Geiger, there is a bus stop.
Yes, yes. It's been something that we've been working on for quite a while, and you'll see it start to move. Everything got pushed off a few months, but we were planning on seeing movement in the first of the year, but, but it will be, we're going to keep on them. Actually, Todd has reached out to them again with a schedule. So we're going to keep on them, and it's going to get done, and it's going to, the thing I learned is the trucks don't meet if it's more than six wheels, so that, so it's different than us. We, when I think trucks, I think of big trucks, but, but I guess six wheels can go down there, but anything over that cannot, is what I understand.
And, you know, tractor trailers, those are too big for that road.
They are, they are, especially right now, for sure.
Especially if they're going down fifty miles an hour and there's kids or people walking down the road.
Right, we agree. We know it's dangerous. That's why we had the safety committee come out there and did a report and why this county is putting that at the top, because it is a safety concern, huge one. Thank you for coming, though, and telling us. I appreciate it.
And thank you for addressing us. And then hopefully, like I said, the biggest thing is we expect that to happen fairly quickly, but now it's going to be kind of pushed back a little bit. So, thank you for your comments. Ricardo, next, who's next?
Yes, Norman Sherman.
Same thing, name and address for the record.
Norman Sherman, 37604 Geiger Road. I'm coming to you today to ask you to please put a pause or a stop on any developments that do not have already an approved engineered site plan or a plat approval from the city. I'm asking this because after considering what has taken place in the last few weeks, I think that we need to take a step back and look at what the next step needs to be as a community. With that being said, I'm not asking for any developments to come off the record, come off the books, but I think we need to put a stop to it. And I think that the need to do is, is possibly look at any studies that you as a city are going to do, the county, whomever else, SWF MUD, related to the flooding and whatnot. With that being said, I'm, I'm asking that you consider putting a moratorium in if they don't meet those two criteria. So if they're not already have a site plan, have a approved engineer site plan or a plat approval, that we stop. And I ask that you do this sooner than later, because if we stand around and kick the can, it's going to end up coming back to get us, because people will have a mad dash and start trying to rush things through. They said that this storm was a five-hundred-year storm, is what the National Weather Service is saying, but we're literally a hurricane season away from having a new five-hundred-year storm if we're not careful. The other thing that I ask is, is that if at all possible, when you do, hopefully do research as to what's taking place, that not only do you look at the existing problems, but potential problems down the road, because there were many businesses, as you know, homes, that have never seen water or even the levels of water. And I understand it was fifteen to eighteen inches of water that we received in a very short period of time, coupled with a very wet summer. But I just ask because you've said to me, a few of you up here have said to me in the past, and I'll quote it, "We will manage and develop the town better than Pasco County will." And that was said to me on the first meeting I went to, and it was said to me on the last meeting. And I am standing here to remind you to please, please, please do better than what Pasco County is doing. And I think, just to finish out, what more can it hurt if we just pause developments, if we pause anything that is not imminent to take place and stop and take a look? Because if we don't take a look, we're one, well, this wasn't even a direct hit, we're one near hit from being in the same boat or worse. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Hey, I might add, that's perfect timing there, Norman. If you just hang out for a few minutes, we'll, we'll get, get. Okay, well, I was going to kind of, all right.
I have asked the city manager to put the moratorium we have in place back on the agenda and stop all of it, because number one, we still don't have our water use permit. So that's one thing. And number two, we're, we have to look and see what's going on. So that will be on the next agenda or two, because I've asked that be brought back.
My, my big concern, and I've, I've expressed it with a few of you, is, is that not just what is going to happen to me eventually, I understand it's going to happen, but it's, I drove around town and I, you know, I, y'all know, I've lived here my whole life, and seeing what I saw was more than, more than sobering. It took me a half a mile of water to get to my father's house. Went from the city's subdivision at the intersection of Wire Road and Otis Allen, all the way to Mr. Ryman's, old man Ryman's house, a half a mile. So I'm, I'm not up here trying to stop development. I just want the people that, and I understand SWF MUD sets standards, and I understand the state of Florida sets standards, and, and we as a community set standards, but I think our standards need to be higher. If we make the statement to me and others that we manage better than the Pasco County government, we need to, it's time to step up, and we need to do it. And I really think that the moratorium, I hopefully, if you're for it, Mr. Spina, I really hope that there are three other people on this board that are for it. Two?
But, you know, you're, the example you listed was a good one, because I think that's a combination. The, I used to live next door to your father, and the entryway into that neighborhood has historically flooded.
Yes.
So, you know, it's, it's not.
Yeah, no, it's not just that. It, it had issues before, but there are other places in town that haven't had the issues. I mean, I lived in Silver Oaks, and there was never water near your house or your house or your house before, and now there's water that was getting close to y'all. I mean, you never would have thought, if you weren't at that one specific spot or back off in the back, you never had it. And so that's all I'm asking is, is that we please not kick the can and wait, that this is something that does need to be addressed, like, soon.
Yeah, I agree.
Because people are going to do a mad rush at the last minute, oh, this is coming around, and then developers are going to start pushing stuff in. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else here want to?
The other thing I'd say is we need to also work with Pasco County as well, because the water doesn't know where the city limit stops. So we, we need to make sure we're working with them as we look to solve some of the issues.
And I, and I think as stated that, you know, we, we had already started talking about discussing this, and then this all happened. It just, it just brings it more in a clear light for us. And, and I agree that it, we need to look at this, everything we're doing, like I said, this brings a clearer picture to us for sure. And, and I agree, we need to look, look into this moving forward too on, on more, you know, on moratorium and so forth.
But just to what Councilman Smith said, I attended the county meeting Thursday night with the city manager, and the county administrator said the county commission has asked them to review, start reviewing some of their development codes, which I think we need to do. And I also told Commissioner Oakley that we need to do it on a joint basis, because we don't want to be approving, have a certain regulations here and have the county here and have them not mesh. So it's got to be, you know, a county-city cooperative of some kind. Anyway.
Yeah, and it certainly does need to be looked at, that's for sure. All right, next.
Next, I have Tracy Furrell, sorry if I say this wrong, Mullen. Thank you.
And name and record, uh, name and address for the record, please.
Tracy Farrell Mahon, 38541 Trellis Avenue, Zephyr Hills, Florida. I came here to ditto what he just said. I had both sides of me could have had water. I got lucky. My brother lives at 6111 Silver Oaks Boulevard. He did not get so lucky. So please, think about, before we do any more development, I'm not saying, just like him, we have things already in the books, but in the future, listen to what she just said, and I know most every one of you, and what has happened to our city is a shame. I just hope that you follow through what you just said. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. And it's, like I said, we'll, we'll address this some more in just a minute. Thanks.
One more who signed up ahead of time, joining us remotely, Robin Simpson. Robin Simpson, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, thank you.
Please pay your name and address for the record.
Yeah, could you state your name and address for the record, please, and you'll have three minutes?
Robin Simpson, 38819 Berta, B-E-R-T-A Drive, Zephyr Hills, Florida, 33540. Can you shut that door? My concern, I've also been here since eighty-nine, but not only the water, but what I'm calling about tonight is the water in front of the high school. I have a fifteen-year-old granddaughter that has been. I have a fifteen-year-old granddaughter that has been coming home sick. She said the smell is just horrible. It's putrid, and I know there's a lot of people with water in their homes, and I feel just absolutely horrible even bringing this up. But I know that the high school is in the city limits, in that black pond right in front of the high school, uh, has downed trees in there, and, um, she just said it smells horrible. It's 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 not the best on a good day, but anyway, it's, uh, she came home with a migraine headache today, and I just wanted to see if there's any way, I don't want to prioritize us, but to say that the children, I mean, you got the high school, you got elementary school and a daycare right across the street. And of course, now you're hearing about the the mosquito-borne viruses for the ZD or the Dungy virus, and I'm this, but mainly just the, um, awful smell, and it's just making the kids sick. I'm hoping that maybe they could address that with the water, guys that are pumping the water as well.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And if you just hang on, we're we're going to address, uh, some of these concerns in just a, just a minute here when all the citizens' comments are done.
Okay, and that's Zephyr Hills High School, but I did hear you guys talking about Geiger Road, and I have a very good friend that lives off of Hazelwood, and I know they've been pumping water out from their, her road. It is a dirt road. I don't know if they can get that graded, is, once the trucks are through, going through there, but she's disabled, and I just wanted to bring her up as well. Hazelwood, off of Geiger Road.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ricardo, you said that was the last person that was signed up?
That was the last person signed up.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak to anything at this time? Okay, ma'am, if you come forward and state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Elena Hutchinson in fifty forty-three Tenth Street, Zephyr Hills, Florida, three three five four two. Um, lifelong resident, work here, live here, um, actually work at West Zephyr Hills Elementary. And, um, we're not in a flood zone, but our house took on water. Um, we've been complaining for a while. Um, Mr. Shane can actually attest to that. We've been sending emails, documentation, and now we're dealing with, we have no flood insurance. We're in Zone X, and, um, our house is torn apart. We don't have a place where we're staying with relatives right now, and I'm thankful for that. But like, what's going to happen? Like, you know, like I said, I've lived here my whole life, and we've, I've never seen anything like this. And, um, like, when is it going to stop? Like, what's going to happen to keep this from happening again? That's, I mean, I feel like it's development. I don't know. Um, that's all I have to say. I'm sorry.
Oh, um, thank you, and and I'm sorry for your, um, condition right now, too. Is anybody else, would anybody else like to speak? Okay, so for for Ms. Elena and Robin and and others and Norman, so I'll let the city manager kind of, uh, give us a quick little update of where we stand with what's being done, and then, um, if you have any further questions, we can address that.
You want me to go through the update of our response to the storm?
Yeah, I think, I think we could just do what our response to recovery effort that we're we're doing right now.
Excellent, yeah, sorry. Um, so for the flooding, um, the areas that did not recede quickly, Twenty-third and North Avenue, have been completely pumped down, um, out to be out of the structure. Uh, the the property is still flooded, but the structure is not, or the structures in that area are not. Uh, Ninth Avenue had, um, at least three homes with water in them. That was also pumped down. Uh, Laurel Hammock had water in a couple houses there. That's currently being tankered out. Silver Circle is currently being pumped. Uh, that's Chalfont Villages Villas. Um, that pumping began today, because we moved the pumps from Twenty-third and North to, um, Court Street, and so Court is closed. So that's being pumped, should be pumped down in the next couple of days. Uh, Alpha Village, I believe that got into a couple houses. When I say Alpha Village, it's Alpha Village and Sixteenth Street, um, Omega Court, uh, Piedmont. And so that got into a few houses there. Um, that has all been pumped down, pumped and tankered. We've also received complaints about, um, businesses, the parking lots, the storage unit, um, on three oh one, the new one that just went in, Napa, Golden Corral, and the Quality Inn. Um, we've not, we've, we've discussed with Pasco County, because it's not just those businesses, but there's also, there's a, an area on Daughtry Road at the end of Greenslope, the south end of Greenslope, that's flooded as well, and there's, I think, five or six, uh, homes in there that have water in them. And so we're kind of looking at that whole area on how that can be, um, removed, that water can be removed. The problem there is there's nowhere to pump that water. Um, pumping is is the most, is the most economical and efficient way to move water. Um, tankers are great, but they don't move a whole lot of water a- and quickly. So, we're looking at that. Silver Oaks, um, we met with, with, uh, the Army Corps and SWF MUD Saturday morning. They put boots on ground and walked the conveyance system from three oh one Chancy Road north to the Silver Oaks area. Um, their assessment was that what's being done is what should be being done by the time, excuse, the system is is flowing, um, and there are pinch points, uh, throughout that system, but by the time the Corps could mobilize and get their pumps running, the pumping that's occurring would get the waters to a level that the roads are passable and out of homes. So, um, the direction from the Corps was to keep doing what we're doing. So that's what's occurring. Um, believe the, the overall depth of the water has been reduced by about six to eight inches in the last twenty-four hours. It's anticipated that the level will continue to to drop six to nine inches a day. Um, so at that rate, all, it it'll be out of the houses, um, within a couple of days, or should be out of all the houses, and all the roads should be passable within, uh, by the end of the week. Next, please. Uh, debris removal. It was estimated that there's about a hundred thousand cubic yards of debris, of tree debris, um, or vegetative debris in the city. As of four o'clock this afternoon, uh, twenty-five thousand, almost twenty-six thousand cubic yards has been collected. Uh, we have independent crews that are in, uh, through our contract with Phillips Jordan, which is a piggyback agreement with Pasco County. Plus, we have more construction who are, um, cleaning the parks and the cemetery. So they're doing all the tree removal there. And then, uh, city crews are, um, picking up debris from commercial structure or commercial properties and, um, private streets slash subdivisions. Because currently, the Phillips Jordan Agreement, or excuse me, FEMA does not reimburse for pickups on private streets or HOA slash CDD developments. So as a, uh, city crew, we're picking those up, um, during normal work hours. Um, sorry, pickup, so that twenty-five thousand cubic yards, almost twenty-six thousand cubic yards, began last Saturday. So in a week, just over a week's time, they've been able to pick up roughly twenty-five percent or of the debris, estimated debris. Uh, utilities, we have seventy-one of seventy-three lift stations that are operational. I know at la- the last update that I provided council was seventy-two of the seventy-three. Um, so Station twenty-eight, the one in Silver Oaks, is still underwater, uh, and taking on water. So they're still working that situation. And then the lift station behind Wedgewood is is having some issues. They, crews were out today to, um, assess the the line, uh, that runs from the station to the south, or, or, excuse me, from the station to the east. Um, that lift station is deadheading, so it's it's kicking on, it's running, and then it turns off. There's the fear, hopefully it's just a clog, but the fear is that one of the trees that went down broke the line. So, um, crews are out investigating that today. Currently, on the electric side, to my knowledge, there's twenty-four, um, properties without power in the city limits. Um, all four, or, excuse me, all twenty-four of those are located in Silver Oaks. Those are being brought on daily. So as the home is dried out and is inspected by the building department, the homeowner, um, well, homeowner comes in, asks the building department for an inspection, building department signs off on it, they notify Duke, Duke comes out and provides power to the, to that, um, property. So as of this afternoon, there were twenty-four units without power, uh, in Silver Oaks. I I do know that Duke and the, uh, Florida Department of Emergency Management, they're working on drying out those, um, oh my gosh, the secondary feeds, the transformers, the ground transformers. So, tho- that's being done, uh, as we speak. Distribution points, there is an insurance village that was set up here, uh, last couple of weeks. Uh, Congressman in Laurel Lee's office had representatives, representation here to help with FEMA questions. Uh, Representative Maggard and Senator Burgess set up Monday, Wednesday, Friday for this week and next week to be here in City Hall to provide insurance, uh, help to individuals that are in need. We're in conversations with Pasco County and with FEMA to set up a FEMA Recovery Center in Zephyr Hills. So we'll work on a location, um, and once that, once that location is picked, inspected and approved, I'll bring that back, um, and we'll push out that information, uh, to council and to citizens. And then there is a comfort station, uh, that has restrooms, washer dryer, and charging stations. They're at Cruzen, those are unstaffed, so, um, you know, you have to, you go out and use it. If there is an issue, there's a number for the, uh, individual to call, but there is no, um, county or city staff manning those, uh, station, or that station. Any questions?
Uh, yeah, Billy, uh, the one lady had mentioned, um, about the standing water at the high school. Is there anything we can do? Uh, I know usually it's handled by the school board.
So Pasco, yes, I'm sorry, so I did not address that. Uh, Pasco County schools would have to to address that. Um, the problem is, is there's nowhere to pump that water. Uh, the water that was across Henry and in the, uh, gym parking lot, the city pumped, uh, we pumped out as much as we possibly could into the ponds. Uh, where this is located, in that front parking lot in the bus loop, there's nowhere to pump that. Um, so that is Pasco County school board's responsibility. Um, I I can't tell you what's in there or not in there.
Have you reached out to them? I'm sure you have. Have you reached out?
I have not. I just, we just found out about the issue or the concern this afternoon, so we've not taken that step to reach out. I would, we can do that. I would also recommend that Ms. Simpson call seven, or eight one three seven nine four two thousand and talk to the school board, um, or she can call the school as well, uh, talk to the principal, but we can make that call, but.
The pumping trucks could be a little bit of that.
That's what I was thinking.
E- even if they got their own, I mean, they.
They could, they could get their own. Yeah, so so I will say partnership with the county as far as, uh, removal of floodwaters, the focus has been to remove out of structures, uh, out of structures and making roads passable. Um, once it gets to that point, um, kind of the focus from that property focuses to the next one that that has, um, you know, structural damage from flooding. But we can call that in and and see what they can do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, and of course, what the city manager is going to, is is a recovery effort right now. Um, and you know, I've been telling people that, you know, for years, watching the news, you see these natural disasters and things happen, it always happens somewhere else. Well, we're we're living it right now, and that's what our recovery effort is is trying to address. As far as moving forward, that also needs to be addressed for sure. And, um, you know, when we look at, uh, development, and, you know, I've been a little uncomfortable with where do we draw the line myself on that, and and I I agree that, um, and there's going to be several conversations. This disaster has kind of shined a light on it and bring it even closer to, uh, taking a look at it. And then, um, you know, I just want to remind people who, some of the development that you see was actually approved as mu- as many as twenty years ago. So we're going to look at everything we can legally do, I think, I think, in my opinion, legally do to draw the line of where where we draw on that line of development moving forward. Um, if, where they're at is the planning stage, whether they have plans, whether they have permits and things like that. That definitely needs to be looked at, in my opinion.
Yeah, it's, uh, the city manager, um, I don't remember your last name, I'm sorry, Elena came up. We had talked with her Thursday.
Correct.
And I'm a little baffled, baffled, thank you, baffled by that problem. And there was a sewage issue, um, and you were going to get with the two department heads. How how is that going, I guess?
So, we are working on that. I don't have an answer for.
But where is the flooding coming from? You don't know yet, or? I mean, it's not a flooding.
All I can say at this moment is the, I believe the flooding occurred the two times that we had the four inches in an hour and a half, and during Milton, when there was eighteen inches of rain. Um, I I don't have an answer of why it's there at this moment.
Is it more than one house? Because your friend was with you the. Yeah, okay. You, if, right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have their, I have, I have all the contact information.
All right.
Actually looked at it right before I walked in here today.
Okay.
So it's in my little blue folder.
Thank you.
Okay, and I, and I think we need to put a focus on if if people have sewage back in in their houses. That's that's a focus there. We floodwaters are bad enough, but, you know, so, um, whatever we can do to address that, too. Does anybody else have any comments on the recovery effort that the city manager just went over?
What are, what about our permits? Aren't we, tell me, are we not charging a permit fee, like, on roofs and things at this point?
Oh, correct. Any any storm damage, um, or storm repairs, uh, if it's, if it's storm-related, we are not, uh, charging permits for the next, I don't know, we're probably like eighty-five days now. So we went ninety days, um, from whatever point we released that. Thank you.
All right, anybody else on council? Is anybody else in this audience that speak on this? All right, well, I thank you all, and I thank you, uh, Billy, for that update on the recovery efforts. And, uh, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the mayor, and we have a couple of, uh, we have a proclamation to start with. Are we ready for the proclamation? We're good? Okay.
We're going to bring them in. So. Hi, guys. That was a long wait, wasn't it? It was okay. All right, come on up.
What's going on, man?
Good to see you.
Thank you for coming. Good to have you guys here.
Good luck.
Congratulations, Steve.
Not too bad.
Well, we're going to do something positive to the, right now. So this is our East Pasco Stars team, and we are very honored to be able to give them a proclamation right now. And, um, I'm excited to go forward with this. Whereas the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida recognizes the East Pasco Stars team, head coach Val London and assistant coaches Belinda Brown and Stacy Morris, Morris, who have demonstrated the teamwork and drive necessary to win their fourth consecutive title to bring home the gold medal for the Special Olympics North American Softball National Championship on September sixth through eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, held in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Fourth, that's exciting. Whereas the Stars won all six of their national, of their games at national, including a fourteen to nine defeat of Kansas Stars for the title. The Pasco Stars beat Wisconsin Bay Navigators fourteen to one, and Three Rivers, Pennsylvania, fourteen to two on the, in the Friday games. On Saturday, they be- beat Kansas Stars thirteen to eight, the Pennsylvania Angels thirteen to six, and the Georgia Evolve Team nineteen to five, leading up to Sunday's championship victory over Kansas. Pasco outscored the opposition, opposition by a huge eighty-seven to thirty-one margin in six games. Whereas eight players hit six hundred or better, finishing the series with an, with an overall six eighty, eight, six eighty-six batting average. Philip Olson hit eight hundred with one double, one triple, and five home runs. George Morris averaged six forty-seven with one double and a homer. Ken Caravoo hit six thirty-five with two doubles. Ken Caravoo hit 635 with two doubles. George Bubby Morris hit 684 with four doubles, two triples and two home runs. Josh Asua, okay, hit 705 with three doubles, one triple and two home runs. Chris Allen batted 778 with two, but two doubles and eight home runs. And whereas the 2024 East Pasco Stars Special Olympic Softball Team consists of team members, John Algood, Justin Buchanan, Jen Kenny Caravoo, George Morris, Philip Olson, Roger Olson, Kurt Walters, Bubby Morris, Chris, Chris Allen, Brian Starnes, Zach Rashir, Ernie Schultz, Andre, Andres Torres, Scott Walter, Josh Asua. Whereas the members of the team and their coaches have helped create a positive image for their community and the citizens of Zephyr Hills. And whereas the city of Zephyr Hills commends, commends and congratulates this outstanding group of young men and the coaches who teach and guide them in the sport of softball for this accomplishment. And now therefore I, Melanie Bar Monson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, do hereby consider it an honor and pleasure to extend this proclamation to the East Pasco Stars on behalf of city councils and the citizens of Zephyr Hills, Florida for an outstanding softball season. All right, Mr. George. Come on, we gotta get, take pictures. Does everybody need to come in or are we good? Come on in.
In the process of this, George broke his jaw and have major surgery, but still got to go on the trip.
Okay. Way to go. Thank you. Congratulations.
Mayor, that's a, that's a good one there. Sounds like we don't just go up there and win. We go up there and dominate.
They dominated this year for sure. So very good. And then we're going to have chief come up and he's going to announce two new officers to us. So.
Good evening. Chief Brewer, Zephyros Police Department. Tonight I want to introduce two of our newest officers. First one is going to be Herman Wedgren. Monica. Herman Wedgren was born and raised in Unica, New York. Graduated high school in 2005 and later started his law enforcement career as a correctional officer before putting himself through the police academy at Mohawk Valley Community College in upstate New York. Upon completing the police academy in 2015, he was hired by the Village of Camden Police Department and then later transferred to the city of Oneida Police Department where he worked until 2020. Herman then worked with the Village of Canistota Police Department in 2022. Herman is also enlisted in the United States Air National Guard. Herman and his wife, three children relocated to Florida in June of 2024. In doing so, he has continued pursuing his law enforcement career by completing the equivalency of training program at Pasco Hernando State College and getting hired by the Zephyros Police Department. Herman and his family are looking forward to the new chapter, chapter of his life. Why don't you come on up and pin him? Herman, will you raise your right hand for me? I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support, protect and defend the constitution and government of the United States of America in the state of Florida in the city of Zephyr Hills against all enemies domestic and foreign. And that I will bear true faith loyalty and allegiance to the same and that I will faithfully perform all the duties of police officer of the city of Zephyr Hills of which I'm about to enter. So help me God. Congratulations. Gage. I'm gonna try not to get mushy here. Gage Dixon was born and raised in Pasco County, Florida. After graduating from Pasco High School in 2018, he attended Pasco Hernando State College to pursue his educational goals. He then worked as an auto accident claims investigator for the next five years. After loss, after the loss of his father, Sergeant David Dixon of the Zephyros Police Department, Gage decided to follow in his father's footsteps as a law enforcement officer. On October 17th, Gage completed the law enforcement cap academy in the top three of his class and was a member of the Class 124 Honor Guard. Gage and his fiancee are excited about their new chapter in their life. And when, uh, when he graduated on, on the 17th, a lot of us were there and I think we all voiced how proud his dad would be of him.
Amen.
All right, I'll turn it back now. Raise your right hand. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support, protect and defend the constitution and government of the United States of America in the state of Florida in the city of Zephyr Hills against all enemies domestic and foreign and that I will bear true faith loyalty and allegiance to the same and that I will faithfully perform all the duties of police officer of Zephyr Hills of which I am about to enter. So help me God.
So I'm a little biased because I think we have the best police department ever. And I know your dad felt that same thing. And I can just feel his spirit here tonight, knowing and congratulating you on this. You're going to be amazing officer. We're grateful you're with us. We're grateful for all of our officers and for their leaders and we appreciate all of you. Thank you for coming to Zephyr Hills.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, chief. And congratulations again to our officers. It's what a, what a wonderful story. A little bit bittersweet, but, and, and welcome to Zephyr Hills, Officer Wedgren, too. At this time, I'm going to let the families, if they want to go ahead and meet out in the lobby, we'll let them exit before we move on. I always enjoy those swearing into the new officers and hearing their stories and stuff too, so. Okay. As they're exiting, we have four consent agenda items that have been voted out in entirety. Or if any council member would like to pull one for further discussion, I'll give it to the council at this time.
Mr. President, I move we approve all the consentage items as presented.
Second. Ed Olmstead, motion, second to approve the four consent agenda items. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion to pass unanimously. Thank you. And we are on to the business items. Business item number 3.1. Turn to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item I have is business item 3.1. Second reading of ordinance number 1495 dash 24. Ordinance of the city council of the city of Zephyros, Florida annexing approximately 9.98 acres, more or less, into the corporate limits of the city described as parcel number 232621 zero zero two zero 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 two zero zero four zeros and 23 2621 zero zero two zero 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 two zero 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 one zero. Zephyr Hills, Florida, in accordance with section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for severability conflicts in an effective date. And this is a public hearing.
All right. At this time, I'm going to open a public hearing. See if there's anybody from the public that has signed up to speak to this item.
I have no one signed up to speak to this item.
All right. No one signed up to speak, but anyone may like to speak? If not, I'll turn it over to council to, for comments.
Refresh everybody's memory. It's been before you, two other times, once on first reading, once on planner report. But it's the additional 10 acres for the Mytech project that's the northeast corner of where Mytech manufacturing facility is going to go. It's an expansion of that. So that's what the annexation is for.
I'd just like to note that it's not part of the moratorium because it's an industrial parcel and this 10 acres will remain vacant.
This time I'll close the public hearing and turn to council.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 3.1, second reading ordinance number 1495 dash 24.
A second.
I have a motion to second to approve ordinance 1495 dash 24 and a second reading. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passing unanimously. Thank you.
Next item is a business item 3.2, second reading of ordinance number 1496 dash 24. Ordinance of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida proposing amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, providing for a small scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, changing from county IL to city IN industrial and the zoning designation from county AC to city LI light industrial for approximately 9.98 acres of real property located south of Tucker Road, west of Pine Street, north of the city of Zephyr Hills municipal boundary and having a parcel ID number 232621 zero zero two zero 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 two zero 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 one zero and 232621 zero zero two zero 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 two zero zero four zeros, provided for repealer, conflict severability and an effective date. And this is a public hearing.
Okay. I'll open a public hearing. Ricardo, is anybody signed to speak? Would anybody like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I will close a public hearing and turn to council for a motion or.
This is a rezoning in future land use map amendment for the parcel that was just annexed in the prior ordinance.
Right. This is probably the third time we've seen this parcel. So I would move approval of this item, Mr. President.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1496 dash 24 and a second reading. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
The next item we have is business item 3.3. It is the first reading of ordinance number 1497 dash 24. Ordinance of the city of Zephyros, Florida relating to the comprehensive plan in accordance with chapter 163, part two, Florida statutes, repealing and replacing the plan's transportation element, providing authority, providing purpose and intent, providing for adoption of amendments to certain elements of the comprehensive plan, repealing any conflict provisions, providing for non substantive modifications that may arise at public hearing or correction of escrivages error, providing for severability and providing an effective date. This is a public hearing.
Okay. I'm going to open a public hearing and turn it over to the city planner for some analysis.
Good evening. Todd Vanderburg, planning director of the city. Purpose of this hearing tonight is for council to consider the ordinance that is included in your packets, which result in the repealing of our existing 2025 comprehensive plan transportation element, repealing the existing goals, objectives and policies in the transportation and approval of the goals, objectives and policies of the new transportation and mobility element, which incorporates a lot of good data information that you've heard before in the mobility plan that we had crafted. Both the existing and the proposed transportation elements are included in your packets as attachments. And, and just overall this element and then others, other elements of the comprehensive plans that will be forthcoming are part of a major overhaul to the city's comprehensive plan. We're looking to the year 2040 for the update of the comprehensive plan. And we're taking a very strong emphasis on a couple of topics like transportation, affordable housing, utilities, infrastructure and water, and now drainage too. We'll also brief you on the next step to the comprehensive plan with some visioning exercises that I know we've talked about. And that'll be forthcoming here in the near future of what, where, when, how, we're going to grow, what it is, what it looks like. And as a side note, just going back to transportation, tomorrow I'll be meeting with Kim Lee Horn as a kickoff to our, our, our transportation hotspots. So we're getting started with all those that you've seen on our hotspots map. So be kicking that off tomorrow with Kim Lee Horn and we'll keep you updated as we progress with those hotspots. We're excited about getting started with that. So tonight we do have Tammy Verana with us tonight. That's been working with us on our comprehensive plan and she's going to come make a presentation on what our next steps are. Tammy?
Thank you, Todd. Oh, wonderful. My name is Tammy Verana with Verana Consulting in Safety Harbor. And I'm happy to present this brand new element to you tonight. It's coming, right? Okay. So Todd did a good presentation, but I'll just reiterate these. So our purpose tonight for this. So our purpose tonight for this hearing is to discuss the proposed goals, objectives, and policies of the transportation and mobility element, to hear public input, and for council to decide if it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, whether or not to adopt the ordinance rescinding the old, the existing goals, objectives, and policies in the transportation element with the new, and then to authorize staff to transmit to the state for state agency review. So that in overview, the transportation and mobility element is a vital component of the city's comprehensive plan. It supports smart growth and development in alignment with the city's vision, which will be refined over time as we meet with the public, but this does include a transportation vision. Its purpose is to meet current needs and also position the community for the future through 2040 and beyond. It includes goals, objectives, and policies, our adopted portion of this element, which include the vision and the strategies for the transportation system, and then the planning commission, which we have some members here today, as well as some members of the public that participated in the mobility plan. The planning commission recommended approval of the GOPs on September 24th. So it started out, well, the transportation and mobility element, in a nutshell, identifies existing conditions, needs based on the data and analysis and also public input, and then develops goals, objectives, and policies that outline a strategy. So we started with the Going Places Zephyr Hills Mobility Plan this past spring, late winter, early in spring, and we had a number of public engagement activities to learn about what the issues were within the community. We had a stakeholders' roundtable, we had a workshop, we had an open house, and we also had a planning commission meeting and a city council meeting. So five opportunities for the public to participate. And the needs and opportunities were categorized into these categories. We have traffic congestion, the need for walk-bike infrastructure, traffic safety, integrated transportation and land use, and transit accessibility. So I'm going to briefly go over the proposed goal. So this is the vision for the transportation element. So in a nutshell, it is about sustaining or developing and maintaining a smart, sustainable, multimodal transportation system that prioritizes safety, accessibility, and equity. It's to be responsible to responsive to the diverse needs of all residents and to support mobility, independence, and participation in economic, social, and cultural opportunities, to protect our natural environment and special places, and support community health and vitality, and to achieve zero transportation-related fatalities and severe injuries. That's the aim. So it's comprised of eight objectives from which policies are identified to support. I won't go into each of those policies. I'm hoping that you read them, and I look forward to your comments at the end and feedback. The eight policies include a needs assessment. So how do we go about identifying transportation needs, including community engagement, collecting existing data, and some other sources? There's also level of service standards. One is your adopted level of service standard for roadways, which is a level of service D in the peak hour. Also, we proposed in this element to have the CRA area be exempt from the level of service standard, so it would be a transportation concurrency exception area. And we have talked with staff about that, including Gail Hamilton with the CRA, and all are in agreement with that. And then there's some other ways that level of service could be looked at in the future. We now look at vehicular trips. In the future, there's some work, some evolution to look at person trips, and also to look at bicycle comfort standards. So bicycle level of stress standards are called. Next, there's a policy or objective regarding how to go about prioritizing transportation projects and some funding sources. Number four is alignment with city goals and objectives, and I have a little list here that I wanted to bring up. I won't go into them. So city alignment with, so for instance, with your industrial corridor, sustainability policies, community health. So a lot of the things that you're already working on, we rolled into that to make sure that the transportation strategies were reinforcing. Safety and accessibility, of course, and interconnected transportation network. So how do different modes of transportation work with other modes of transportation so you can have a seamless experience if you drive a car, if you don't drive a car? And then development design. So as we're working with land use and development decisions, are we making sure that the development network of tomorrow is in line with the vision and the objectives of the comprehensive plan element? And then also, the last one is just looking ahead at innovation and technology. So just to kind of have our ears to the ground as things develop and if they make sense for Zephyr Hills. So we identified some strategies, those highest priorities for responding to current and future transportation and mobility needs. Looking at, and I won't go through all these because I just mentioned it, but I would go through each one now. So we first looked at traffic safety measures. First, looking at the National Traffic Safety Administration's Safe System Approach, which is a multi-pronged approach for identifying what are the issues behind our safety issues, and then how to go about identifying solutions, including interacting with your law enforcement who is out there observing what things that happen on a daily basis. From that process, identifying safety projects and working with the state to get funding to address those safety needs, and then developing some complete street design standards within your land development code. So as the city embarks upon new transportation projects or other agencies come into the community, that they're also following these complete street standards. And I also like to indicate, complete streets are appropriate to their context. So what's complete in your downtown area may be a lot less robust in a rural area, but nonetheless, complete. So relative to walk-bike infrastructure, we would look at continuing the city's sidewalk program. I know you've built a lot of sidewalks and you have plans to do some more. Also, within the CRA master plan, there's proposed for a greenway loop in the community redevelopment area and some bicycle network improvements that really kind of create a seamless walk-bike environment throughout your downtown. Looking at multi-use trails, building upon your multi-use trail master plan and also working with the county relative to their greenways and their trails plan, so you have a lot of interconnected system. Public transit, although the city doesn't operate the public transit system, they can coordinate with GoPassGo to do enhancements to bus shelters and locations of traffic stops, or excuse me, bus stops, so that the riders have more comfortable and safe facilities. Priority road projects that would include increased traffic safety and throughput. So these would be capacity projects that would be multimodal in nature, so they would accommodate not only the motoring traffic, but also walk-bike and transit users. And I think the priority projects, from my memory, is County Road 54, Island Boulevard, Morris Bridge Road, Chancy Road continuing on to Old Lakeland Highway, and then also this concept, which is a vision for the roads that you see listed on this slide, to be improved as far as additional lanes, multimodal features, to make an overall loop network around the city. And this would be in partnership with the MPO and also the Department of Transportation. So these are, it's just a vision at this point in time, but it's a starting point. And then, this is the last one, so integrated transportation and land use, continuing to work with the county relative to the joint planning area for areas outside the city that are likely to become annexed over time. Those include US 301 North, US 301 South, around the Zephyr Hills Industrial Corridor. Smart corridor design, so as you're looking at new corridors that you actually are intentional about what it's supposed to serve. When we try to make a corridor be too many things, you know, a street that's serving adjacent uses or a road that's really, you know, for speed and efficiency, we need to look at what it's going to be, because sometimes when you put too many things on one facility, it creates safety issues. And then in the community redevelopment area, the vision is for the grid network within this area to return to a two-lane bidirectional system, and we feel that the bypass loop road that we showed is the component that makes this vision possible. So those would work together. So in order to implement the goals, objectives, and policies, a few things have to take place that would come back before you. Anything that relates to a land development code, those regulatory tools, would have to come back in the form of an ordinance. Any type of program, say if you wanted to have a shuttle system or a transit connector between Dade City and your downtown. Again, those would need to come back to your city council for funding approval. And then a capital improvements program, as you know, all your projects need to be adopted as part of your five-year capital improvements program. So another opportunity for you to weigh in on these things. Just as a long way to say that there's things in here that aren't necessarily self-executing. They need to come back to you for future decision-making. And then aside from that, there's always the important intergovernmental coordination. Transportation projects are very complex and expensive, and we do need to have our partners engaging with the public, engaging with the development community. Everybody who has, who's a stakeholder in transportation needs to be at the table. And then over the long haul, monitoring and evaluating, determining what's working, what might need to be corrected over time, and of course, updating your comprehensive plan for the next time. So our next steps would be tonight to obtain feedback from the council and also the public for the council's decision. We'll transmit the element to the state agencies for review. In sometime in January, February, we'll hold that second reading, public hearing. And then, as Todd mentioned, we'll continue work on the other comprehensive plan elements. And with that, I know it was kind of quick, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and let me pull up my policies in case you quiz me.
All right. Thank you, Tammy.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have anything off the top of their heads? Go ahead, Ms.
So those three hotspots, so I actually, you know, when I saw this, I brought up my little map that we had from before. So the three priorities were County Road 54 and Wire Road and 12th slash 12th Street, around the high school, North Avenue and 12th Street, US 301 and Fifth Avenue. So if we, you know, you indicated that it excluded the CRA, but I assume it does not exclude the roads, the major roads, the feeder and one-way pairs, current one-way pairs, that that's, that those are not excluded. These are, the CRA is internal streets, is that what?
Well, it would be any roadway facility within the CRA would be exempted. And the idea would be that you would look at more of your walk-bike and transit improvements as having a little higher priority, because those are the types of mobility that supports the redevelopment that you're envisioning in the CRA. It doesn't stop there being any improvements on those. Is that what you're concerned about?
Yes, I think that's probably my biggest concern, is that if we exclude those things, then, you know, how do we attract, how do we motivate the state and the county, you know, like we did 15 years ago when we asked them to make it, you know, to make 301 two-lane, slow the traffic down through that area, half-parking, make a complete street, and then do the bypass option on the one-way pairs? Well, as we've grown, that would, that won't work anymore. That's why the concept of this bypass route and encircling the city that isn't, and none of those roads essentially are in the city. They're all primarily county roads. There seems to be a little bit of a disconnect there, but I'm sure that you've thought about that.
So relative to the concurrency exception area, it's predominantly for developments that would want to come in, and then you do a traffic analysis and then determine if, you know, if you want to issue a permit, typically, there's a pay-and-go provision anyway for those types of traffic mitigation. So the city would still have its level of service D peak hour to, system-wide, you'd want to make sure that that's, everything's flowing. I think there'd still be the incentive from the state or the county to, or the MPO, to help prioritize and fund those projects. So I don't think that this would necessarily change their approach to those facilities. It's mostly for just eliminating sort of a roadblock that might be to sort of mixed-use development that you want to have in your downtown.
Understood. Next question I had was, or just suggestion, and that is as we develop these spots where we have the bus stations for these young folks or whomever's using the, using the bus service, folks without cars, that we've, that we, when we pour the pads that we wire for some sort of a solar panel and things like that, so that we're providing lighting in the evening hours at those bus stations to allow for, you know, expansion of the route in evening hours. So as, again, as our, as our community grows, I think more and more people will use public transit, and it still needs some work.
Yeah, especially if we're going to be looking for extended service hours into the, you know, for the third shift workers, that would be important. Okay.
Anything further?
I had, I do like the idea that we're looking at this and looking way into the future. One of our, I think, one of the biggest concerns for the council, of course, is traffic congestion. And I think by us looking at all these different options, especially the hotspots that we've determined, what, over a year ago, this will help us get traffic hopefully under some sort of control. It should also, we've had a few accidents, people getting hit, and I believe with the wider walkways and such, hopefully, we could keep the bicyclists off the road possibly and help with some of those accidents that we've been having with some of the pedestrians. And I just think that it's a good idea that we're starting on this now, and I do like the idea of really concentrating on the hotspots for the traffic.
And also, related to that and to the lighting, that came up quite a bit during our public meetings, but lighting in certain areas was felt to be a safety issue.
I like the idea, actually, I like the idea of the loop road, because I think that's, as Councilwoman Wilson said, it's mostly county roads, and that's what I think most of the congestion actually is. And so if we can get people from point A to B and not have them on 301, but have them around us and go in a different way to get on Morris Bridge or something like that, I think that does us, that helps us immensely inside the city, where the county's not going to help us. I mean, the hotspots and different things are going to be on our back, because those are most, those are the city roads. So I think the intergovernmental coordination aspect of it's very important. I think we, I'd like that you mentioned the priority road projects. Those, again, are, you know, East 54, Island, Chancy, that those are the things that we have to work on. Island has become terrible, as has 301. I remember back, I don't know, 2025 or something, we were talking about this, and one of the engineers told, from DOT, said it will take you 40 minutes to get from North Avenue to South Avenue, and I thought he was out of his mind. And, oh my God, you know, it's not 45 minutes, but it's a good 20, you know? I mean, it's, so I think those are important. So we need a lot of coordination. I think we, you know, the planning aspect has to look at the sprawl, which you mentioned here, and limiting sprawl. And I thought it was interesting, some of the statistics you had, where we're still a little older than the average, you know, 50, 50 years compared to that 7.5% of our population doesn't have a vehicle. So, you know, we have to get the network work with GoPassGo to where we reach those people and make sure that they're living in areas, that the bus is going in areas where they live. And I'm not so sure sometimes that that's actually happening. I think I see bus stops on Main Streets, but I think it would be good if they went up 20th Street or Airport Road or, you know, North Avenue and some of the elder developments, where those people could then access the buses a little better.
And that, just along the lines with your road projects, which are, you know, more of the expensive, complicated projects, interacting with the transit agency, GoPassGo, when they develop their transit service delivery plan that you can request, you know, to make sure that there's input as to where bus service is really needed. And if they're looking for revenue and, you know, enhanced revenue, you know, that you're support the transit agency as well, because they typically are running on very low budgets.
And I think it's good that we're working on the sidewalks. Billy, have we heard back from the... Billy, have we heard back from the survey on Sixth Avenue yet, do you know?
Yes.
Are we working on that?
Yes.
Because I think, you know, it's good to do in town, but, you know, kids live out in different places, and with that two-mile walking distance to schools now, you know, we have to reach a lot of different neighborhoods, so.
And I know that the city's been doing some neighborhood plans, perhaps in the CRA, but if you reach out and you continue to do neighborhood plans outside that area, that's another way of finding out what the transportation needs, including, you know, how kids are getting to school and what their sidewalk needs are.
But, you know, as we all know, this is very timely, and, you know, the needs assessment is right, so that we're working on the stuff that we need to be working on to help relieve some of it.
Yeah, and we thought that coming off the heels of the mobility plan, which was funded through a state effort, that we had good, robust public involvement, that we could go ahead and get this one in the books, and then we'll work on the other things. And we see, foresee no issues relative to consistency or compatibility with what's to come in the future relative to those other elements.
I feel like we've had great input from community. It's been a lot more than I've seen in the past. And, and I appreciate that, because it's usually four or five people in a room, and we've had rooms packed. Transportation's a big hot button. Little less right this minute than it was three weeks ago, but it is a big issue, and it's one we need to continue. And I appreciate the planning people who are here to help support this today, because I know that they gave a lot of input, and I appreciate that.
Well, attended, came to almost all the meetings, so.
Yeah, they were very supportive.
The important thing, too, is the MPO's been here, Pasco County people have been here. So, I mean, that's vital, because if we don't have their cooperation and working with them, and they know what our needs are, we're not going to get out of the gate, so.
You know, with that said, I, and I appreciate that partnership. We finally, I feel like we have that communication open now. And they have come into our city, and they are listening. So I appreciate that. I know that's taken, staff has been the ones that have really bridged that gap, and I think it's, it's real important. Because, yeah, we can't do it alone. These, most of these roads aren't ours. So we need their support and need them behind us all the way, so, thank you.
Right, and it's good to have the flexibility, because as you said, you give the example about the loop, you know, things change, and sometimes we have to be able to move with it on the fly, too. So I appreciate the flexibility on looking at some of those items, too. Does anybody else have anything for Tammy? We are still in the public hearing. Ricardo, has anybody signed up to speak to this?
I do know that everyone signed up to speak.
Anybody like to speak to this item? All right, if not.
Planning Commission, no.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. I'm going to close the public hearing and turn it to the council.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the proposed comp plan update, transportation element, on the first reading in support of the Planning Commission's recommendation. First reading ordinance number 1497-24.
Okay. I have a motion to second to approve ordinance number 1497-24 on the first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Todd. Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, council.
Excellent.
And we are on up to, appears the city manager report.
Resolution approves the local mitigation strategy. This is a document that the six municipalities in Pasco County get together, identify potential vulnerabilities and risks of not just Pasco County, but the cities. And then they create a kind of a response plan to those vulnerabilities, and it's used for funding through FEMA for some resiliency grants. Attached is the resolution that will be read by title for consideration and approval.
We have the first reading of resolution number 836-24, resolution of the city council of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, authorizing the city council of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, to support, adopt, and implement Pasco County's 2024 five-year update of the local mitigation strategy and providing for an effective date.
Okay, I just have a question. On the resolution, you said 836-24?
Yeah, it's 836. I think your packet might have got a.
Yeah, that's what I was just making, making sure of.
Yeah, it's 836-24.
Okay.
830.
I have 834.
That's a different.
Oh, that's a different one, but ours is 832. But it's 836.
836, okay. That's what I was just clarifying.
Thank you.
Council?
I move that we approve resolution 836-24, the local mitigation strategy with Pasco County.
Second.
Motion to second to approve resolution 836-24. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. And I know, Billy, you gave a, well, it's still under the, that's all you have for the city attorney's report for right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you may have something, comments time?
Yes.
Okay. City attorney?
I have one more item. It is first reading of resolution number 834-24, resolution of the city council of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, authorizing the city council of the city of Zephyr Hills to participate in a joint meeting of the municipal association of Pasco to discuss matters of mutual interest and providing for an effective date.
Okay, and this resolution is kind of just a formality for our map meetings.
I'd move approval of this item, Mr. President.
Motion to second to approve resolution 834-24. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. All right. Okay, we are at the mayor's announcements.
I don't have much, but I just wanted to make sure that we thanked all of our employees. I know everybody's still working hard. This is the storm that keeps on giving. It just doesn't seem to want to end. Every time there's a resolution, it seems like another one pops up. So I know that, that we've been working hard, the city staff has been working hard, and I appreciate that. And Kevin, I think he left. No, there he is. You know, as we, we worked with the FEMA and Danny Burgess's office, I appreciate you sending that out to the public, because I do think that our public needs, need a little bit of help right now in how to navigate some of these forms that are out there, and especially residents like we saw today. If they didn't have insurance, we need to see if we can figure out how to make sure they're taking, you know, at least know how to fill out the forms and go from there. But we appreciate it, and, and I am happy with our new police officers. It's always great to have new police officers, but today's a very touching one, so, thank you. It was a very moving thing, so appreciate that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, mayor. City manager?
I have nothing to add. Just reiterate the update I gave on the recovery efforts.
Thank you. City attorney?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Nothing for the city attorney. And we are down to the council. I'll start with Councilman Smith.
Mr. President, I just, I just want to thank all the staff, city employees. As we went around, I mean, everybody was doing everything they could. I mean, and they were all working, they understood what the situation was, and, and really, I couldn't have been more prouder of our staff, and every one of them. I mean, and every one of them were not complaining, they were happy to help, just, we have a great staff. And I, you don't know until you really need somebody how they're going to do, and our staff did tremendous. So thank you again, all of them.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. I, too, would like to echo my appreciation for our staff. In particular, I think that our PIO did an amazing job of pushing information out to our residents. And some of that was supplemented by communications with our other directors. For example, I emailed Mr. LeBlanc, our public works director, and he was able to share with me the debris pickup schedule, because I walk around my neighborhood every morning, and people were literally stopping me on the way, hey, when are they going to come pick up this mess? So I said, well, I don't know the answer, but I'll get back to you. And, and within a few hours, I had the question I asked answered, and was able to communicate with all those people. So thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. I'd also like to thank our CRA director and our Main Street executive director for an amazing Main Street, Zephyr Hills, Haunted Theater, and Halloween Howl. I think it might not have been entirely record-breaking, but it was pretty close, I think, the attendance was. So thanks to all of you for your work on that. Nothing for the community.
Thank you, Councilman Proctor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilkinson. I definitely want to thank all of our employees, from the city manager on down to every department head. I'm telling you, we, we've all lived here for a really long time, and none of us have ever witnessed anything like this, and I pray to God we never have to again. But it's great to see our, our staff from the top to the bottom, just working their, working really hard to make this city good again. But anyway, that's all I have.
Cleaned that up well.
I did.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I'm not going to echo everything from Billy on down. I think everyone's done a tremendous job. I'd like to thank the residents who have been, for the most part, patient and understanding and working with us in neighborhoods and trying to clean things up, and.
All right, and same, I mean, everybody's been doing a fantastic job, and one thing I was just really concerned with was, and the directors did a good job with this, too, as far as, you know, we had employees that were helping citizens, but they're also citizens, and they, some of them need to help, too. So we were very mindful about making sure that they were able to take care of their, their own, too, and still keep up with what, what they're doing. Because remember, not only we have recovery going through, but they have their normal everyday duties that they have to do, too. So it's, it's really challenging. I think the smoke is starting to clear a little bit, hopefully that will happen. And, you know, one of the things that was brought up earlier about taking a look at, you know, moratoriums and moving forward development and so forth, and I know this is an early point, but when we get to talking about that, we've got to recover first, we've got to assess, but we cannot drag it out. It has to happen quickly. And I've said that before, when, when I talked about the, you know, reducing our density, and I was in Billy's office and Todd's office for five years about that, and we just cannot drag it out when we get to that point, so. Other than that, great job. I drove by, I came by Saturday night, too, and I thought, wow, there's a lot of people for, you know, people still being in a challenging time, so it turned out pretty good, it looks like. And if there's nothing further, I'm going to.
I got to say one thing, I forgot to say, Main Street, we had a blast. Did you like my costume? So I did have fun with my costume, and we, I did a cute little video. It's very embarrassing if you want to be embarrassed about your mayor, or we put it up, because I rode an oxalado across town, and so I was chased by, by clowns downtown. But it was really, we had a good time. It was great to be able to step back and enjoy a night with our residents. They were happy to be there. It was very, thank you for going through with that, and I'll talk to Antoine about that, too. But I know that it could have been easily said to postpone it, and I'm glad we didn't, because our residents needed that, so, thank you.
I agree with that.
Sorry. You had a council, you had a question regarding Veterans Parade?
Yes, thank you for reminding me, that was on my list. I talked to Ricardo earlier on, I have not been able to confirm the time, but on Saturday, November 9th, there is a Veterans Day parade being hosted by Main Street. And historically in the past, our commission had, I mean, our council has participated either individually or as a group, and I just wanted to know, does anyone have any interest?
10 a.m.
What's that? It's at 10 a.m., okay.
Well, I have a question about that, because normally they do an event at the park, and we're not, are we going to be able to do that down there?
Where it's, where it's, the south end, the south.
Park's closed, am I right?
So Zephyr Park, the north side is looking pretty good as far as debris cleanup, tree removal. South side of the park, not so much. I drove by there today. I do know we have crews, the more construction, they're working diligently to get that cleaned up. If you asked me today, the answer is no, we can't have it there. Give us a week, maybe it looks a little bit different. So depending on how long we want to, to hold on that decision on the location, what that'll, you know, decide what the answer is.
Yeah, and I've been in contact with the Marine Corps League, and I, I let them know that the park was closed, that we may have to look for a different place to be, and I actually think it might be a better thing to just have them decide another place, and then you're not put in, especially since they need to market it, for sure. So I'll reach back out to them tomorrow and, and just say, if you're going to go through with it, you know. But I have to speak there at 11, but you, we have at 10. Yeah.
I'm just going to say, what about Veterans Park? Wouldn't that be a good place?
Yeah, do we have electricity at the Veterans Park? No, I didn't think so. Okay.
Veterans Park is, is clean, and cemetery has been.
So they could do it there, but without any electric for a microphone if they wanted to. We don't have a portable generator.
We might be able to work on that with a portable speaker.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to them about that tomorrow. Okay?
Right. Anything, anything else? I would say I think it might be a little bit more low, low-key, because I think it's a little early to try and plan something, because.
Okay. All right, fine. I just wanted to know for Mr. Gilden.
Okay, meeting adjourned.